Okay, we'll start our Board of Trustees meeting. We have three separate minutes to approve. We have the October twenty-three meeting, the October twenty-four long-range plan meeting, and the October twenty-five safety workshop meeting. Let's start with the October seventeen board meeting. Do I have a motion that would accept the minutes of the board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
You need a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The October twenty-four long-range plan meeting, do I have a motion that would accept the minutes of this meeting?
I'd be so moved.
I have a second.
Sure.
Any discussion for corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
And the October twenty-five safety workshop meeting, do I have a motion?
Any connection?
I have a second. Any discussion? Corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Okay. Nothing here. All right, at this time, do we have anyone who wants to speak?
I hadn't had it out because of the previous sound. I can put it out there.
All right, do we have anyone who would like to sign up to speak? Make comments? You have two minutes, and it must be on something that's on the agenda.
One of the agenda.
Yes. I hope it's on the agenda.
Right here. You're so in the agenda for the board meeting, that is right here.
I'm going to look back to see if there's anyone who would like to see. For anyone? Yes ma'am? I will have to speak up, I'm sorry.
Sorry, my voice didn't want to come out. Where can we have a copy of the minutes you just accepted?
You can request those, we've got copies of those.
Did I get copies of those, please?
Yes, if you could email me anyone that wants copies.
Can I have copies available at the meeting that you're voting on minutes, please?
Well, they're not always approved that meeting, so.
That you're voting on it, so it's an actionable item.
You can have those that we approved today.
Today.
So now they've been approved, so now she can distribute those.
Can you distribute them?
Yes.
For those who haven't had a chance to read them.
Correct, no one would have had a chance to read them yet because they hadn't been approved yet. So now that they're approved, if you would email me, I can send them to you.
We have a certain amount of days.
And they will be posted on the website as well.
Your name is?
Summer Dale.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak?
But they're out there just for her to go retrieve, right?
Yeah.
They'll be posted on the website.
Yeah, they'll be posted on the website.
Yeah.
So we don't have to request them to be emailed to you.
Well, when they're voted on in a meeting, they're an actionable item. So they should be available for review at that meeting.
I can't.
They're not approved, well, they're not approved yet. So you can't.
You can't post them until they're approved. So they're approved tonight, and they'll be posted in the next day or two. You have forty-eight hours to post them.
I have some word, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, let's move on to my report. As you've already heard, we've done walkthroughs the past month. Greg, is there anything on the walkthrough with the city that you might have to report on the long-term plan?
It went pretty well, we just, we walked through with Jerry Walker and Varnon Blackwell, they were the two city building inspectors. We talked about things like access to the bottom doors, you can go out, you can't come in in the basement. Eventually adding the elevator eventually, and kind of improving, you know, everything's pretty much some concern about power requirements, electrical requirements, capacity downstairs. Other than that, it went pretty well, I've seen the buildings laid out very well to make modifications.
No red flags really?
No red flags.
Andy, was there anything that you?
No, they were, they were really, they were very open about accepting everything we've already done, it was fine. The doors were the only question, there had to be some additional hardware added to the exit doors.
It's like a panic divide, and you can run out.
Come in and then go out.
Yeah.
That was it, the sprinkler system, everything else was there. When they put in the new elevator system, well, they had a couple things, but that's, that's it. And even the, even the access, which was concerning me, it was fine with them.
Yeah. We also had a walkthrough with the architect. And he was, kind of what we asked him to do, we took him through the children's area to look at what would be necessary to enclose the children's area with some kind of a storefront, divider, doors, and that kind of thing. We walked back to the reference section to see what it might be needed to provide some privacy in some of those office areas and some of those meeting rooms that are back there, they're all open. That was one of the areas that we took him to, and then we went to the basement also to look to see. And we just kind of, we want some conceptual drawings of the basement as well, with the possibility of the genealogy being moved down, with the bathrooms, with the elevator, with meeting rooms, a friends area, just to look at some conceptual drawings so that we will have some of that give to the foundation to kind of show what we're thinking about as far as the expansion and use of the basement. So the architect is going to be working on some of that hopefully soon. So was there anything else, those of you that were there, Andy and?
The Sports Hall of Fame as well.
Yeah, that was kind of mentioned too, that might be an area to move, the Sports Hall of Fame and whatever if that gives them a little.
Their own timeline, their timeline for this turned to happen in three months.
We did not talk about time, we just, we're just kind of, we really didn't want anything.
Three to four months is.
Yeah.
That's ambitious.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll kind of push them along and at least get some drawings.
Conceptual conception stuff.
Yeah.
We already have bathroom drawings already.
Right, bathroom.
And the elevator.
Elevator.
The rest of it is just partition walls, it's not.
Yeah, those drawings that he, those tentative drawings that he made, like, should have been in your packet, were pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah, or I, I think I got them yesterday, so I just forwarded to everyone, yeah, because he sent it to the app.
One of the, one of the things that he talked about was to make it an area that made great for people to come in, when they come downstairs, it's inviting. And so that's what that front, that big area, open area was, to make it easy and for people to wander around with.
Yeah.
It's okay.
Why would we need anything more than what they've given us?
What?
Why would we need anything more than this, as far as drawings? We have the bathrooms, we have these, why would we need more? Because it's going to cost a lot.
I think what you're going to need is, the bathrooms are fine.
Yeah.
But you're going to need wiring, power, HVAC system, set of drawings.
Oh yeah, absolutely, yes, full set and all that.
Until you authorize the design.
Oh, well, we don't need any more conceptual drawings, right? I mean, these are wonderful for fundraising and.
Yeah, if you, if you go along with those.
Yeah. We just have to, we didn't talk about those.
Okay, I just, I didn't want to incur the cost of getting more drawings, so.
Okay. As I mentioned last month, I'll be sending out Manny's evaluation, the first of December, to you all electronically, and if you want paper copies of it, please let Summer know, and you can do it on paper as well. And Manny will be getting us his accomplishments and progress before that time. The foundation, and Chad may mention this, at the last foundation meeting, Chad mentioned that they have some positions available on the foundation committee, so be thinking about anyone that you might recommend or suggest to the foundation for becoming a, of the foundation board. And also be sure to check your, check Facebook, the Blount County Public Library Facebook page, and all of the social media things, because it's, the thing, the activities are changing every day. They're adding stuff all the time, and they've got numerous concerts and events and all kinds of things going on that are not on the calendar that you get every month. So be sure that you stay in touch that way and attend as many of those events as you can. So that's, that's my report. If I have any questions or additions? Okay, Manny?
So I'm actually begin, because just, we have Justin here still. So I just wanted to provide an update on the remote locker. It didn't go as, so again, we're still going to be the first in Tennessee, so we're still holding on to that. But we did have some technical difficulties, and Justin with his IT team was, were able to prevail and come out victorious with this, so.
Yeah, so Manny, hey, that's to get involved with the locker. I think the locker had already been delivered to Lewisville. So we don't have any networking down at the Lewisville Town Hall. I was trying to explain to Manny that, you know, early on, when we were talking about voting centers, Lewisville Town Hall was going to be one, and we probably would have run a fiverr down at that point. But that's kind of up in the air or mixed or whatever. The closest fiverr that is that town being, Lewisville, is on New Topside Road where that gas station is. It costs more than a hundred thousand dollars to run it all the way down to Lewisville Town Hall. So we just kind of backed up, backed up and punted once Manny was telling us, you know, hey, we need help with this locker because we can't communicate with it. So we just said, we set one of our computers down there, given the library a way to remote to that computer. So whoever here is going to be, you know, going out and sticking the books in, they'll remote to the computer, set it all up, and then go down and throw the books in the locker. It's all kind of a little self-enclosed system, the locker sits out on, we've seen it, it's kind of like a little library red box, if you will.
That's a good one.
Yeah, I talked to, we believe we'll take a tech today, and he was able to get finished it installation, so.
Very good, thank you for your help.
Yeah.
So what does Lewisville do? They have no central Wi-Fi system?
So, yeah, well, Lewisville has their own internet. I don't know if they get it through Comcast or Spectrum. And they have Wi-Fi within their little building that they control. They have an, they have an IT guy that is on call, and I guess they contract him out. So if they need something, they call him up and he heads over there, so.
But their network and our network are.
Yeah, we're not, yeah, we're not, there is no fiverr that close to, to there.
Well, thank you.
So with, with the locker, we're going to have our training, finish and complete our training next week. So if everything
Is it the same thing?
goes correctly, we'll have a ribbon-cutting opening ceremony
that's.
early December, so I'll send something out to the board.
Yeah, I think.
But we're going to test it next week. Justin, were you able to see the locker doors open?
No, I didn't go down there, I just, I was watching him, I was remoted into that computer after people were working on it. And so I just saw him, he brought up the software, he could see all the lockers, he did some little testing.
Is Townsend the same thing?
So.
So Townsend, Townsend is actually on our fiverr, we have fiverr up through Townsend.
Okay.
The caveat to that was, the county paid for fiverr to be run at Townsend Elementary School, which ran right beside the town hall and the fire department. So they paid extra to be connected in to there, so they do. So if you all want to put a locker up there, it's easy peasy. No, no extra.
It's actually a visitor center too.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
What's that?
Wait, Manny, if you guys want to talk about the Townsend Visitor Center too.
Okay.
Thank you. Going back to the report here, I do want to point out, like Stephanie said, we have so many wonderful programs, but I wanted to point out that now we offer on a monthly basis, Spanish language storytime, and that's through Merivale High School, Spanish Honor Society, which is fantastic.
That's amazing.
So they do such a tremendous job. Actually, all the departments are amazing, but to see that, that really, that meant a lot to me. And I know our patrons, and that, you know, continues our mission here at the library. We were also participated in the Tremont Writers Conference. We had our writer and resident participate. Dee was there for the panel and others, and we had several staff there as well. I heard it was fantastic, and they're going to have it again next year too, so. It was great to have staff as well as friends and our resident, writer and resident participate. And that was, that was great, and we'll continue to do that, build that relationship. And then also, I have to point out, and Kathleen's not here, so I have to, that the library helped out with New York Times Style Magazine. I guess they did a video, and the staff contributed a photo. And I guess you see the photo for about one second. So, well, we participated in that. It was about black folk musicians and the genre's deep history and role Appalachia.
And just one question about the Garner photo collection, just because I was on the historic trust when when those plates were given, has it, have, have all those now been digitized? I know that, that there was, at some point, there was, there was hope that we could get them all, all done, Judge Dugan wanted that.
Yeah, and not all digitized.
All digitized, okay, well, it's.
There is a library, reference librarian that oversees that, yeah.
Oh, there are thousands, so they're still working.
Yeah, and then also, the maps that Lamar Alexander had donated reference, and Andy, you saw them. Another reference librarian created these brilliant descriptions of each map.
Incredible.
So the PR committee, we're going to get those.
Home court signings, so that
Yeah.
they're, they're a little more sturdy than just a piece of paper on the wall. They look great, I hope we get those up soon. People will spend time looking at the maps, because she then explains everything that's on the map. So it's like, you're just not looking at a map. And they go, they're all from the seventeen fifties to the, to the end of the seventeen hundreds, talking about everything. One of the things that came from that was the, the Megs line. We found, we found where the Megs line actually is. If you know what the Megs line is, it was the separation between the Cherokee Nation and the United States. And we actually, they, they found it on the map, and then have now researched that. And they've written a couple books on it, and so you can actually go out and find the Megs line if you want to, and then actually see it, which is kind of neat. One of, one of the, one of the trees that are marked as in, in front of Blackberry Farms, right in front of their spa, and it's right there on the road, so you can see it if you want.
Well, it was well.
Question on that, is, similar, is the map displaying and the, the write-up of it and all those things? Has that been, is that available on the website as sort of a digital display?
Not yet, but we can do that. Yeah, and the maps are currently right outside our hallway here, so once we get the, the phone poster board up and running, we'll have the paper come out. Maybe Mr. Alexander could come out as well and speak about it, there are his maps.
He thought that, when he donated them to us, to the library, he thought that each map had already been researched by somebody in Nashville. What they did was they loaded up one map, and then copied the same thing all over again, so there's like twelve maps.
Yeah.
Something like that. And so it was the same thing, wasn't any explanation at all on what we have. So the library staff just did a super job researching it all, and finding out what, who printed the maps, where they were printed, and everything about them. So it's, it's great.
Over in Patron Services, we have completed the interviews for the vacant patron services manager position, and we have offered the position to a candidate, they have accepted, but still have to go through background check, so we cannot divulge who it is right now. I will say, all the candidates had previous library experience, many years of library experience, with the specialty being the circulation department. So you're going to get someone that has done the job for, a master's degree. We're, we're very excited with, with, with the individual. And in the meantime, Summer's been wearing, she already wears multiple hats, but we added another. She basically has now the hat rack with her with the hat, and she's been overseeing the patron services department. And we really appreciate her running around, she's, might be on roller skates soon, just go from department to department. I, last week, attended the Level Five Director Summit up in Knoxville at the East Tennessee History Center, which I had never been before, and it's really incredible. I had a, had a great time between workshops, just walking around the museum. And this is an opportunity for me to converse with other library directors from around the state and kind of just talk about issues that we're all facing, and looking for solutions, or a shoulder to cry on, you know, it's just one of those things where we all get together and just talk about things going through the state and offering suggestions. It was a two-day summit, it was great. They'll probably have it again in Knoxville, because that seems to be the ideal location. I look, this is my second one, I, I really look forward to it, it was just a good time to have them all in the same room and just talk, you know, you learn so much. And, and the workshops were fantastic too. They dealt with hiring new people, dealt with budget presentations, dealt with working with the Board of Trustees. So I did take a lot from that too, but especially spending that time with the other directors and just kind of just talking about everything in the library world, so that was great. I want to turn, before we get to the finance, I want everyone to see Angeneate for a moment, and what she's wearing. New logo, yeah, just our, is it Van and White? Van and White is Van and White.
It's bad.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good.
So it, we've gotten a tremendous response from the logo, and thank the entire PR team. I just basically sit in and let them run, run the show. I mean, when it comes to the mascot, I'll probably have my hands in it more, because I'm definitely looking forward to that. But the whole PR team have been great with it, and I'm very proud of them. I know we all, we all are very proud of what they have accomplished. And, yeah, and, and thanks to Visual Voice, they were our partners, they were the, a company who worked with us and just hit a grand slam, I wouldn't say a home run, grand slam when it comes to this, so.
It's good luck. Manny?
Yeah.
Is there going to be standard attire for your staff members, or is that required?
Oh, no, but if they want to wear, like, I'm going to wear mine during the Christmas parade that the library will be participating in next Saturday. So, so when we go out to various events, and eventually when we do get a bookmobile, I think it's, it's excellent to be wearing those shirts, because it shows that we're Blount County Public Library. We have Toucha Truck down at the Learning Lab, or the Fall Festival, or heck, I just wear it, I wore it on Sunday, I was just doing errands, I was just wearing it.
Church?
So. But they will be eventually available for the public to purchase, correct, down, down the line, so. I do want to just read just one from the page, from a patron that, that emailed us about the logo.
Can I say the same?
Yeah, yes.
So what is it? We had sent out via our Patreon Point Engagement Platform to all our cardholders that we might look different, and that this is what to look for when, when you're looking for the Blount County Public Library in terms of our logo, and that our app would look a little bit different, and this is one of the responses that came back.
I like the new logo, as it emphasizes the progressive pursuit of learning by intergenerational and intercultural avenues, thus enhancing the educational acumen?
Acumen.
Acumen of all persons, nice creative work, thanks for the energy to make it happen. And we've been getting a lot of those, so.
Can I have a few, I have a question before our financial report?
Yeah.
I did, that's okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, first, around the logo, I mean, it's hard work to get that done, and I think it's wonderful, I'm really proud of it, so.
Well, I really have to say, for the friends, and, and I know I'm probably at the labor in the point, but I have never heard of another library who doesn't have a huge budget, and is usually a metro, that gets to partake in an endeavor like this. And what you helped, you know, I, I know I probably shouldn't make it personal, but you have helped everyone on our PR team achieve a feather in our cap to go through a process like this. It was wonderful to see how Visual Voice reached out to the stakeholders, to the community, to the staff, and gotten their input, and then how they helped us shape it into what we had was words and concepts. And so I know what the last four logos looked like, and they were all around the building. This building is beautiful. This library is so much more, so kudos and thank you to our friends. Sorry.
Yes, yes, I'm really proud.
Yeah.
Thank you, friends. My question's around the remote locker and staffing. How many staff members, do you have multiple staff members and are getting trained? For example, someone's out on vacation, someone's at spec, you know, help me out there.
We have five.
Okay.
Including myself.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
That sounds perfect.
There's three in the room right now. Five, yeah, yeah.
And are we, are we covering, it's probably not like mileage for staff to go there?
Yes.
And things like that, okay, so it's all squared away?
Yes.
Great, you guys.
You're insured too.
What's that?
You're insured too.
We're insured, yes, yes. Yes, as long as we drive correctly and not reckless, yeah.
That's very good. This may be a comment for a very far future, but would it be worth looking into the aerial autonomous delivery system for books? Instead of having to even drive anything out there?
I would love to be the first Tennessee that's accomplished that as well, so I would be, yeah.
Are you going to teach us how to drive?
No, no, you can drive that, but it would fly itself. Yeah, just you just program it, if it's a fixed point.
I don't know how we would do that with the FAs.
I was going to, I was going to get FAA. Tell me, you're a vet, maybe.
Yes.
In bag of a book or something, but maybe further in the future.
Yeah, I like where you're headed, I just, not meaning to shoot it down.
Yeah, and I just want to turn it over to mine, unless you have another question about the format of that, I'll turn over Angeneate for the month.
I got a question, I'm sorry, on your collections update?
Yeah.
You're, you're changing out seven hundred and thirty-seven books, where do the books go afterwards? you're you're changing out seven hundred and thirty seven books. Where do the books go afterwards? Do they go to the friends to be sold when you call them out of the library? Where do they go?
They do, yeah. They go to the friends unless they're in such a bad, bad, they, yeah, recycle, every cycle. Yeah, good question.
All right, well, what is it? We are tracking, um, very well. Uh, you will see that in terms of our operating expenditures, um, with salaries, we are below, um, the expected projection percentage of thirty four point six one percent for the year. But in the first quarter, I think we had six changes of, um, positions. And, um, what is it? So that's what you're seeing, that's why you're seeing the reduction in that. Um, in terms of our operating expenditures, um, it is so low because again, we have that relationship now where we have, uh, general maintenance, um, taking care of our building and our, um, properties. They look great. Love it. Thank you. Um, what is it? And, uh, what you'll see is next report, they have, and I I made a comment at the bottom. Um, the county has not yet debited, uh, debited the operations line, uh, which is where they put general maintenance's funds for all the work that they do. Um, this past week, they have transferred over, I believe it was a hundred thousand dollars. So that percentage will shoot up from this report to the next one. I will put a note in the report as well explaining that again. Um, we're doing very well in terms of our revenue. Um, what is it? The revenue can again look slightly inflated because we have received, um, two quarter payments for all, from all of our stakeholders. And, um, we have the foundation, uh, donation included in our revenues for it. So, um, that's that's in our numbers. So that's what it is and you'll see that breakout in the revenue spreadsheet. Which is the third one, at the very bottom, it breaks it out so that you can have a clear, um, idea of the what's going on. Are there any questions regarding the finances?
Just a, um, quick question based on on how how good this looks. I'm assuming then we can just go out and buy the walkie talkies and just charge. Is that correct?
We can, I I I and Angeneate can, I'm sometimes I'm like an everything is a Scrooge, so I I, but I'm just being very frugal.
I like that about you.
Yeah, that's right.
Because as soon as I say, yeah, we're okay, and you're like, let's spend a dollar. I'm like, well, wait a minute. Just make sure that, how does that track over the quote period? I think we can do that. Uh, report of the foundation board, Ted?
Uh, thanks, Steffi. And just my own kudos. I think the logo is tremendous also. Uh, and, uh, I know the whole board, foundation board, I thought it was, uh, truthfully well done. And the just the the image and the and the slogan bound together. I mean, there's so many wedge issues you guys have been dealing with for all this past year. Uh, there's so much about the library that, uh, everybody, uh, believes in, like lifelong learning literacy, children's program. I mean, there's so so much that that you do, it's the focal point of the community. And it's something that we can, you know, uh, themes we can fundraise on for sure, so, uh, kudos, it's it's a great job. Um, like Steffi said earlier, um, we are losing a couple of long-term board members, Jane Droff and Eliza Kanatsa are both rolling off. And, um, I would, it's an important time for the foundation, uh, to have an injection of new leadership. I would not ask for each of you to think, uh, of someone who might be a good fit, um, uh, for the foundation. Because I would like to, uh, in addition to replacing those outgoing board members, also, uh, expand our board during this time. So, um, it's it's always difficult finding, uh, board members. So if you all have ideas of of individuals, I would love for you to reach out to me. Um, uh, the, uh, a- as you had alluded to, what what else does the foundation need? That we needed to hear what your planning was, what, because the last thing the foundation has heard, uh, we weren't sure about what the results of the two thousand eighteen plan were, what portions of that you were adopting, what you weren't. And so hearing that's, it's important to understand what what our goals are, what our costs are. Um, we we have an idea, I think Manny, I mean, Andy, you said, um, was it around six hundred thousand still for the elevator or?
Yeah, but that's that's going out the door now.
Going out the, okay.
So that was two years ago.
Yeah, so, um, anyway, we need a, we need a goal, I mean, that we're that we're shooting at. And so definitely those, uh, images are, the renderings were good and stuff that we can, that we have a basis to start on. Um, as far as what we're doing in the next couple of weeks, it's focusing on getting our annual campaign letter out. We have the letter done. We're just gotta print it out and stuff envelopes over the next couple of weeks, so. Uh, that's all I have unless you all have any questions for me.
Oh, oh, yeah, they've gone up, I'm sure.
But at one, I mean, the two thousand nineteen was in the multi-million, I mean, eighteen, so I mean, this is smaller than.
Prices are coming down actually.
So Chad, you guys, like you have the information you need to build a campaign or kick off the campaign soon?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I I think, uh, understanding that what you you, if I understand it correctly, I unfortunately my truck blew an engine when I was, we were meeting with the art architect, um, uh, so I could not make it to that meeting. But my understanding is that you all, uh, are moving the genealogy, uh, department downstairs and you have a dedicated space for the friends, uh, and then the elevator and the library. And this, and this, um, yeah, I'm sorry, that's right. And then the sports hall of fame. Uh, and so I think that's a comprehensive thing that we could take to the board and 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 try to initiate a capital campaign.
Thank you, Chad. Uh, report of the friends, DeMar.
Um, just a short report this month, um, we received a very large donation of books from Dotson Memorial. Um, they actually closed their school slash library. And, um, so we're still going through those, uh, just reminded one of our ladies that we have like seven or eight boxes just of sheet music that they give us, um, which we do sell pretty good. Um, we're preparing for our December sale, the seventh, eighth and ninth, uh, this month, our December. Um, in mid to late October, around the twentieth of the month, we passed, uh, last year's sales total for eBay. So that left us about six weeks to set a record. So we're we're shooting for a record, uh, for eBay this month, for this year. So other than that, usual stuff, volunteers in, volunteers out.
Thank you, Dee.
Sign me up for your elevator.
You need elevator operators for Thursday and Friday. We're gonna do Friday since we lost the elevator last sale on Friday. So if you have an hour or two hours you wanna, you know, visit with some of the patrons, you know, please feel free to let me know what times you're available.
It's not too bad.
Most people have fun.
And Dee, and will other members of the friends be participating in the in the Christmas parade?
Um, yes, so far I have two walkers and two people on segways. Myself and my husband will be on our segways, so.
And there's some candy with?
We're giving out books. We have four to five boxes of children's books set aside. Lot of imagination library, some Chick-fil-A, which are not resalable. Um, and other books that, um, basically would end up in the recycle or discard. So, um, we have them all ready to go. No, no sugar, no, no sweets, no minutes, just reading.
Uh, report of the Coe River Regional Library, Liz, we're glad you could join us.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, great, thank you so much. Yeah, Dee, um, as a parent, I wanna tell you, I really appreciate you not handing out candy and giving out books. That's that's great. Um, I'm glad to be with you all, albeit virtually. Thank you for letting me do this. Um, as Manny mentioned, uh, one thing that we are, we did host recently was the level five, uh, director summit. We have about twenty five, um, similarly leveled libraries to yours across the state. And I think we had twenty two or twenty three of them represented. And so we were, we were pleased to put that annual event on and, um, Manny, you are correct. As far as I know, the plan is to have that in Knoxville, uh, every year because that's the most centrally located for those for those libraries. So we we had a good session and and we were glad to be able to do that. Um, in terms of other training opportunities, of course, we mentioned this because training is a big part of what we do. And we also require all library staff of every level paid library staff to, um, to get their continuing education hours. And so we will be having, um, at the region, we are having a creating restoration in the workplace workshop on December the fifth. Um, this will be in person at our office and Mary Brown will be our trainer and she'll be sharing strategies to help library staff deal, um, with conflict in the workplace and focusing on building healthy supportive relationships with colleagues. So, um, always a good subject, uh, to go over. And then in January, this is not on our report, but January the ninth, we will be having the regional director from the Holston River regional, no, not Holston, sorry, um, in from Martin, Obion River. Jenny Gilhan will be coming and she will be providing a long-range planning workshop, which is, um, Jenny will make it fun. Long-range planning sounds dull, but Jenny will make it great. It will be fun. Um, also encouraging our staff, um, if if there ever is any downtime in libraries, uh, public libraries, I feel like there's not ever any downtime, but, um, sometimes December and January can be slow. So, um, encouraging our folks to check out Web Junction and Niche Academy as well to obtain those, uh, CE hours. Um, tech grant, our, um, LSTA tech grants are in full swing. And, um, so folks could begin spending when the federal fiscal year began, October first. So all of our libraries are busy spending, or most of them who got that grant. Um, we did share with our libraries about the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development Grants that are available. Um, one is the, and I'm gonna read this so I don't get it wrong, the Digital Skills Education and Workforce Development Grant. Um, that's funded by some ARPA money, um, and it distributes, it'll distribute seventeen million dollars across digital skills, education and workforce development, um, including broadband infrastructure. So, um, letting our libraries know about that, the deadline to apply is December the sixth. Um, there is another facilities grant also through, um, the ECD. So we're proud to help get that information out. We highlighted in our report the services of the Tennessee Library for Accessible Books and Media. And some of, some folks may know that service, uh, as its former name, um, the Library for the Blind and Physically Handicapped. Uh, that is out of Nashville and it is, of course, a free library program that has over a hundred and fifty thousand recorded large print and Braille materials available. So we we wanted to highlight that, uh, it's easy to forget, um, because we're not in Nashville. But for folks who enjoy large print, they have a massive large print collection and they also, um, have graciously made that available to our libraries through our library loan. So that's a really great program. Um, we're just, other than that, encouraging, um, library board members to complete their trustee certification program modules online. And, um, that's really all I have.
Okay, thank you, Liz.
You're welcome.
Uh, any other committee updates? We've had all those, haven't we? Uh, no old business and no new business. Uh, we have one policy for post polling place petitioning and political campaign policy. Um, do I have a motion and then more discussed? Do I have a motion that we? This this time, we're not voting on this. Never mind. Have any, uh, discussion about any corrections? I didn't have one thing. Go ahead, Andy.
Uh, on the very first line there, where it says committed to ensuring our community access to library programs, resources, uh, the the rest of that didn't make sense. I thought you you might wanna cross off the hand, cha-change it to capital T and and then the safety of our patrons are the premises during your polling is paramount.
And so if it was library programs, resources, services, well.
Services, period.
Yeah.
See, the language arts teacher wants me to take out the first and and leave the second hand.
Okay, that's fine, so.
Well, see, because the same's the thing, what we're committed to is doing both of those at the same time. So that's what the second hand's connecting. So dropping the first hand still ties those points.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's just the same. See what I'm saying? So drop the first hand. Yeah, drop the first hand, keep the second hand.
Okay.
I, you know, I I can't.
All right, then then you go down to, um, two and two, so two, three and six are all the same thing. Uh, so I think you need to really look at it. Signage may be displayed on on library property, don't really use it sixty days prior to an election. And then must be collected the day after the polls close. But then you go down and say they have five days to remove the signs.
Yeah.
So that doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
And then, uh, putting up signs sixty days ahead of time, to me seems like an awful long time. They have signs on the library grounds.
It is a long time because how long is the, uh, early voting open? It's not sixty days.
Next spring it'll be, I think Tennessee's primary is maybe in March. And so early voting will be right after, um, I don't know, say, so talking three weeks, three and a half weeks, maybe.
Sixty's a lot.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Uh. So just when you see like sixty days and a hundred feet, I worked with the elections administrator and she also consulted with her with the attorney and so those are legit numbers on there, so.
Okay, but I I I just don't think the library needs to have.
Is that the maximum maybe that?
Yeah.
Yes.
It says no earlier than sixty days.
Sixty, so it stays.
So should it say no more than sixty days?
No, I'd say less.
I I think no, I think no earlier.
Yeah.
But.
That is the best.
Well, and and with that in mind, number six, where it says that signs aren't permitted if this is not a polling place.
Yes.
Right.
Right, so that that one does, that one does need to stay in because, because that way, you know, it's not like the roadside where you know, and it puts your stuff out.
Okay, I would suggest moving that to be the very first thing, um, clarify when signs are allowed and then the rules for outside interest.
And then number three, this is the same thing, it's five, it says five days after the official voting day. I, you don't want signs on the library property five days after.
Well, I mean, speaking from a politician's point of view.
Yeah.
It's hard to get all of your signs up in one day, especially if you work another job.
No, we, she she used, she used to get the East Tennessee colloquialism. Getting them up means taking them down. That's, that's.
Thank you, Sean.
For my family, for part of my family's from that, but.
So my suggestion, my suggestion is to, in number two, and must be collected five days after polls close and then drop three.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, drop, drop number three.
I have a question on number seven. You know, and you know, that happened while I was here and I gave you guys a call about it and. That guy is not a hundred feet from, and he was harassed. Harassing is a broad term.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean.
He's annoying.
He was stopping young people with their families and so. Is it a hundred feet? Cause he was not a hundred feet.
And I will say, I actually spoke to a memorable police officer and after I spoke to him, we never saw him again.
Okay, cause when I spoke to him, he said he hadn't heard from anyone from the library.
Well, that was baloney. Cause I originally spoke to him and then it took an officer to speak to him, but yeah.
So folks can't petition, what's what's a hundred feet after the, after the sidewalk?
Hundred feet is from the property.
From the bill, from the front door.
Always talk to the, for the roads.
Yeah, both of the property.
So it should, it shouldn't be anywhere near the.
No, he could have been near. Over the hot rods or something over there. And you know, the entrance going up that that street over here.
Should, should that be temporarily marked or something during the season so that you can just, staff can just point and be like, you need to be back where that mark is?
Well, it's not a public library staff. If that's an election official, they have to, and they, the whoever it's happening to needs to report it to the people inside the polling and let them handle it. Uh, but yeah, I I, they usually have a marker sometime that does that.
They do, and it's from the door. Cause it's for us, yeah.
Yeah.
And so.
From the door or from, what was it here?
The election commission, I thought it was from the door.
It's from the door.
Yeah.
It doesn't say door, so.
But, but that's because they're talking about different things. That one is petitioning any time of the year. So that's a different requirement in place.
Do you need a one that says political petitioning?
You, would it be worth breaking this list up into two, two headers, one for general time and then election season? So that's very clear what the normal.
We'll move seven down to the bottom.
Yeah, cause number eight says that.
That's an election.
Right, yeah. Seven needs, needs to be by itself somewhere, maybe number one. Because, because it's, it, because it.
It sets the brand.
It really been gone, yeah, and the others.
We're getting all this. I'm drawing lots of arrows.
So Manny, when things like this get updated and we make changes, how does this get communicated to staff? I'm thinking about our communication.
So they do have a web portal and the policies are on the web portal.
So this is, this is, so Summer sent, once it's approved tonight, Summer will put out an email. Well, when it's approved, when a policy is approved, it is um, shared with the staff saying, last night's board meeting, this policy was approved. She attaches it within that email and then tells them where they can find it within the employee portal.
Does, does what is sent to them, is it just like a clean copy of the policy or is it like what we have a diff? Cause they might.
Clean copy.
It is a clean copy. It is the final word.
The final one that's signed by the chair. Any other corrections or discussion?
Updated it. Do different, right?
What was that question I didn't hear?
We're talking about in one document or was also recommended we break them up into two documents. I mean, it's not doing one document.
I think it's still one document, but two sections.
Just a suggestion is, what I might, what I might um, suggest is. Editor title at Blount County Public Library petitioning polling place and political campaign policy. So that that way the petitioning comes first and then from mayor.
And those could be two of the sections?
Correct, correct.
All right, moving on to uh, the second item under new business. Uh, our workshop prior to the meeting was on uh, safety and security. Uh, and I think it was discussed that we uh, form is committed uh, to uh, address this, an ongoing safety committee. So I will need a motion uh, from someone about.
I move that we appoint a committee to investigate our security issues at the Blount County Library.
Any opposed? Any discussion? We will have the notes from our uh, workshop that that Summer will have. So I think that will give them, this committee, something to start with, um, as as well as us uh, moving forward on some of the things that we talked about. I do need a board member who might like to volunteer to be on this committee. So you all can just let Manny or I know if you're interested in serving on this committee and we, I would really appreciate it. So we have a first, a second, all in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries. Now, do we have the book return drawings? Okay, I didn't think we did.
We, we have updated ones, but I don't think everyone has looked at it. So maybe we hold a special meeting in December with only that item on the agenda, the vote.
We'll, we'll get the drawings and then we'll shoot out an email and see who can come and who can't. As long as we have a forum to vote on them and everybody's okay that.
What's our, what's our policy? I was thinking about that once I read, we have a policy regarding e-voting.
Yeah.
Situation like, like that because it seems to be if we, if we get the drawings and have the motion made that that might be something that we could, that we could, we could address that way rather than having.
I think this, this hasn't just come up before and. I don't know script on, we have to.
Okay, I mean, cause I, I know, I know that I couldn't attend a meeting on, on Zoom. But I didn't know if it's a, if if it's just for a vote, whether we, whether we have to, whether we, we have to.
I was prepared. I knew that was coming. I, I uh, am not an attorney, favorite phrase. Um, I, I would recommend doing that in a special called meeting, like Manny said, and just having that, you know, that way it's not questionable at all. Um, I would, I, I, we, we have been informed that email voting is not, that the provision in state law. And now I've, you've put me on the spot and I can't remember the code, but that does not apply to library boards. Um, being able to email vote, that has to occur in an open meeting, yes.
Thank you, Liz.
You're welcome.
In in COVID, in COVID, they were, you know, they allowed us to meet uh, electronically but.
I know that our, our board of church, we do lots, but you know.
The code can um, of uh, digital meetings extend, extended now is in, is in, is in perpetuity or how does it, I'm saying it wrong forever.
So in, so in COVID, I'll just, um, Governor Lee um, created executive orders that extended the provision with very specific, you know, uh, rules and requirements that had to be uh, met for governing bodies to be able to meet electronically or in a, in a virtual forum, that kind of thing. Um, I believe it was, it was extended several times, but it was not extended beyond, I want to say, April of twenty twenty-one. And so if, because it was not extended, you reverted back to the law. Um, and so, yes, our, the guidance we have been given, check with your county attorney. Uh, but the guidance that we have been given is that uh, board members, and you all are a governing board because you are appointed by, of course, the county and the, and the cities, you're appointed by um, those elected bodies. So you are a governing board. It wouldn't affect, the open meetings law wouldn't affect, of course, church boards or private organizations. But, but you are a governing board. So you are subject to the sunshine law.
Thank you for that clarification, Liz.
You're welcome.
So um, if we get those uh, book return drawings and we'll contact you and possibly just have a, a call meeting and that's the only thing on that agenda and it'll be five, ten minutes, whatever. So we can get that process, continue that process and get that process moving with the uh, the county getting the bids out. Getting it out for bid.
Yeah.
And getting that back in as quickly as we can.
So, so when do we think that will happen?
Yeah, can we look at dates?
Yeah, because I'm just being real honest.
I'm out a week, a week.
I'm out the first two weeks. Well, they got it, they, they sent it out and um, there were some corrections that needed to be done on it. So they're really, really close. Um, I think they were waiting on the civil engineering, uh, and you said Chris Zorro came last week.
He did, yes, he did. Yeah, he wanted to look at the uh, the drive, the driveway and then there and stuff.
So anyway.
We have to vote on it in December.
We, you know, we just realize, we, you know, we have to buy it to again where we can do that. I'm sorry, we just, we need five people, you know, to handle a, a vote, so.
Speaking, speaking for myself, I'm in town the whole month. I'm one of those crazy people that works between Christmas and New Year's. So and if it's a thirty minute or less, I can always walk over here from work and take care of that.
Okay, we'll, we'll pull everybody and just see if we can get a date, if if they get it to us. So we will, thank you.
That's a big deal.
Okay, we do not have, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Um, we do not have a, a regular scheduled meeting in December. So our next meeting, next library board meeting would be January sixteenth at five thirty P M here in this room. Uh, does anybody have any comments or questions or anything they'd like to say before we, before I ask for a motion?
Happy Thanksgiving to everybody and Merry Christmas.
And happy safe.
Anyone wants to join us in the Christmas parade and wants us to?
Wait, wait a minute.
Second. They said it's Saturday.
Yeah.
So the, the question is, is the, is a library, is a library gonna throw out candy or?
No, no, it's, it's books, yes.
So, so I, I didn't know if there was like a, a.
They, there's already plenty of candy everywhere.
Thank you very much.
Favorite with the holiday market.
Oh, that market's next weekend downtown, this Saturday.
This Saturday?
Yeah, that's this Saturday. Yeah, oh, don't worry, I know when that is.
All right, do I have a question that we adjourned?
No, I have a second. Do you, timeout? Do public input not on the, or not on the agenda? Or is that just? That's, I'm, I'm, I'm good, second.